In the first case, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started. The zoning board of appeals, if you want to, on a Zoom call, if you want to be recognized, you can use the raise your hand button. In order to be recognized and I will, we'll call on you. And we will, we will muddle along and we're going to start with 2102 Jeremy Young, 140 Commercial Street, application for a special permit to construct a contractor's shop garage in the site of the demolished building that held the NBND rooms under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.3.1 and 6.23. This is continued from last time. So I will go to you first, Mr. Young. Do you have anything additional to add? On this one?
Uh, no, just that the, um, the letter that we submitted to the board.
Okay.
Are we sure? We need the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the board can, remains Will, Trevor, Manny, Mick and myself. Yeah.
So I take it everyone got a copy of, um, everything that was required for the last meeting?
Right. Yes. Okay, good. Now, this is, I'm gonna start tonight with Jan, even though Jan is not on this, um, on this board, but Jan is, um, wrote the zoning bylaw that.
We, we all, the board wrote it, but.
Board wrote it, but she was intimately involved in the by, in the writing of this bylaw. And so I asked her if she would be willing to take us through the various parts of this thing, so we could see where we are with it. So with that, unless there's, I'll start with you, Jan, and then I'll ask for the audience after.
I will do my best. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So when this was amended back out in a few years ago, when I was still on the planning board, the idea was to try and make it a little easier for people in the trade and the shelters business to run a business out of their house while still being respectful of the neighborhood. So do you want to go through each ABC, you know, A through G, or do you want me just to point out places where I think that we have some issues?
I think I'd go through A through G, just so we know what we don't have issues with as well, so that we can clear it up.
Okay. One thing I'm gonna mention before that, though, is the plan shows that the height of the building is 28.5 feet and 5.4.4 maximum height of buildings is 28 feet. So you've got, you've got six inches too high on your building. Okay.
Okay.
So A says no more than three non-family members can report for regular work, and there's a specific definition of family members. And it can include people who aren't related to you, who are living in your house. So Jeremy, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna just say through you Sharon, did you, you saw the definition and? You understand family?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't think you have a problem there. You do have an extra person reporting for work, but it's maybe one day a week when they can. So to me, that's not regular. So that's okay to me.
Okay.
Um. Anything stored by, on the property, I'm paraphrasing these, uh, conceal from view but, of a butters and from street view with fencing, trees, shrubs, and from what I can see, I think you have that covered. I mean, somebody else might have a different opinion. I think we got that covered. Okay. Um, C is external storage shall not exceed 30% of lot area. And you have a big lot. It's 53,108.8 feet, square feet. When we wrote this, what comes to my mind is that one of the examples was if you're, let's say you're in the shell fishing business and you're storing your racks in your yard. You know, they're not in a building, they're stored on the lot. It can't take up, whatever you're storing out there, can't take up more than 30% of lot area. And it looks to me like you're okay on that, too. Then there's motor vehicles and through you Sharon, Jeremy, did you have a chance to see what, uh, it's Massachusetts general laws, chapter 90, section one, what they consider a motor vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. I was a little confused about what you said in D. How many trucks do you have altogether?
So I have four trucks. Um, this is gonna be a two bay garage. So two trucks will be, kept on the premises. Um, and it, and the other two trucks are take home vehicles for employees. For some reason, if they didn't take one home, uh, one night or over a weekend, it would be in the garage then.
Okay. So it's four altogether?
Correct.
And they seem to meet the criteria. Okay. And your two trailers, that meets the criteria?
Yes.
E is about signage, signage is not an issue. F, what's F? Uh, no offensive odors, et cetera, et cetera. Um. We're okay with that. Um, G is where I think we might have an issue. Can you walk us through how you came up with 2,903 square feet? And did you, you saw the definition of floor area of a building in the definition section? You know what you're allowed to include?
Yes.
Can you walk us through what, how you got 2,903?
So I, um, Peter Kane obviously prepared my entire plan and revised it to include the 2,903 square feet. That is all, um, private residency. So I, I live on this, on the property and, um, he added up my personal space. Um, I reside in, uh, the main building, um, which is the inn, which is the upside down L building. That also included the garage building, which is personal space and then the two, um, 10 by 12 garages at the end of the driveway.
Okay. You're not in the cottage?
No.
You're, so this is the personal spa, your personal space in the inn?
In the inn, correct.
So the.
Plus the garages, yes?
Right.
Yes.
That sounds like the right way to do it, but the issue is that you've got, you wanna use, you wanna build a garage that's gonna be what, um? 1300?
It's gonna, yeah, be 1320, which is 45%.
And that's the issue I see there.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, Jan, just you know, there's a second floor, so you need to include the square footage of the second floor as well.
Um, so it'd be more than 1,300 plus?
I, I come out at 1815.
The, the, um, the shop garage is only one story.
But there's two stories in the building. Unless I'm losing it, there's stairs and.
Uh, oh, correct. There is a, um, there's what you would call like a crawl space. It's, it's, it's basically, I mean, yes, it is actual stairwell. You can walk up there. And that space is 10 by 30, I believe. Building.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask Jeremy a question there?
Sure.
What is the height from the floor to the ceiling? Can you stand up in there? To work or whatever? I, I would think it would be for storage.
It's certainly just for storage, for putting something up there that you use once a year or storing snow shovels in the summertime.
But it's not going to be used for somebody to work up there or do anything related to the business?
No.
Okay. I think that clears it up. Okay.
So that might get us back down to 1320.
I would think so.
Right.
Um.
And the, the, I mean, the, the overall goal of the building 30 by 44, um, the, the width is the narrowest we can go for two garage doors. Um, I would have to shrink this building by one third and, um, it would shrink it down to just one door and just kinda make the whole thing not.
Right. Okay.
I guess the.
And if I, if I do, obviously, i- if I add up all my square footage on my property, I meet the criteria, but obviously they are hotel rooms.
Yeah, that was.
That was my question.
That was my question, too.
So.
2,903 square feet is only 870.9 square feet.
Right.
Yeah, but the question is, what does that mean, the principal? That word principal?
Good question.
No, I think it's pretty clear. The prin, the, the whole purpose of the statute is to take your residence.
Yeah.
And, and use it as a business. So you don't take the inn.
Yeah, no, no, I was also on the planning board at the time. So I, I, that's my understanding.
You know, everything else H, I, and J, I think you're fine with all that. It's just get around G. I don't mean get around, but.
Yeah. So the two issues we have are the size of the garage and the height of the garage, as I understand it, right?
On the, because of the garage doors, the height, um, of the building is a half a foot higher. Um, but when it is graded, it will be only 28 feet. The way it isn't the plan, I mean, if you can look at it, the, if you can imagine, the foundation will be somewhat like sunken below ground.
Oh, okay.
So the, I'm gonna meet, bring the material up on the side foundation walls, meeting that code of 28 feet.
Okay.
On the plan, I mean, that's the builder, that's the height that it's gotta be on a plan.
Okay. All right, Manny.
Um, on the height, the height is calculated, um, by the four corners of the building, the average elevation. So I guess somebody should have come up with that. You can't, you can't go by the height of the building itself. It's from where the elevation started, the four corners. And the building inspector could, uh, correct me on that if he can. So Mr. Kane should have come up with that, I, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm all fine with pretty much everything.
What about the size of the building? Given that we have this bylaw that says we can't allow that size?
But it's unfortunate that, that the, the inn itself, I don't know how we could get around it. I mean, I, I can see, uh, what Jeremy is talking about. If you make it much smaller than what it is, it doesn't make sense to build a garage.
Right.
Anyway, that's all I have for now.
So Mick?
Yep. Um, I'm with Manny on this, too. I'm curious, how did you come up with the 2,903 square feet? Go ahead.
By, um, uh, taking all the square footages of private residency, um, on the property.
Okay, that makes sense.
But what about the garage?
He added the garage.
I added, I added the garage and the two, um, sheds at the end of the driveway, which are personal space.
Okay.
I, I, I took a lot of time and factored everything in and I kinda knew from the get go that it would be over and sure enough, it was.
I, I understand. Uh, my question is more for the board is can we get around this with this 2,903 square feet? Cause I'm, I'm fine with the project as it is. And, you know, we do, we're losing so many people in Wellfleet and we're losing young business people and, and the town, if we don't do something, the town's gonna die. But, so I feel it's on us to help as much as we can. And is there a way that the board can get around the 1,320 versus the 2,900, the 2,903 square feet?
Uh, you can with a variance.
Variance, yeah.
But I, I don't think it qualifies as, as variance, but.
You know, I mean, I don't think it does either, you know? So.
Okay, Trevor?
Um, I have the same, the same concern. I tried to sort of, uh, reverse engineer the math. To figure out how much, how much personal residential floor area they would need to have in order to get a building that was 30 by 44. So, and the way I did that was to, uh, 30 by 44 is 1320 square feet. We know that.
Yep.
1320 has to be 30%, can't be more than 30% of, of the floor area. So, uh, 1320, the number that that is 30% of is 4,400. And then you're allowed to include the accessory building in that. So if you subtract the 1320 out of the 4,400, uh, you're left with 3,080. So that's the square footage of residential floor area that they would need to have on the site to accommodate a building of 30 by 44, at least by my math. And they, um, according to their statement, they're at 2,903. So that's actually quite close to 3080. It's only about, uh, less than 100 square feet off. Which isn't very much. 100 square feet is 10 by 10. So I think we might be able to make the argument that there may be just a hair over, but at least by my math, they're pretty, pretty close to where they're supposed to be.
Okay.
Assuming that the 2,903 is calculated correctly and that I can't attest to, but I believe that, um, I believe that Pete, uh, Peter, Peter? Did that, um, did that work? So I, I would venture to guess that it's, it's correct.
And Will?
Yeah, I just think it, I mean, I don't know why you don't include the square footage in, in the second floor. It's square footage and it's related to the project. I, I think we're being intellectually dishonest if we don't, if we don't include it, but I'm just one vote.
That, that, that of course makes my numbers slightly worse, but yes.
Yep.
The problem here is that, you know, the intent of the bylaw is not to overwhelm a lot with a lot of equipment in a residential area, but this is a large and hidden lot.
Right.
So we're in a different, I mean, in terms of detriment to the neighborhood, I feel like, you know, the neighbors have not objected and won't see it. So, um, and I'm also wondering why? Why are we doing this under this bylaw instead of just building a garage on a lot that's plenty big enough to have a garage?
That's a great question.
I had the same question.
Uh, Paul?
Paul can answer. Yeah, the building meets the dimensional criteria to, to have the building. It was more about the, the use, Jeremy being able to run his, um, service trade home business from, from that building. He can build the building. I will give him a permit to build the garage for its private use.
But not for a commercial use?
Well, that's up to, that's a board decision for a service trade home business. So.
Yeah.
So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But, but it, it does meet the dimensional criteria to be, to build the, uh, garage that he wants to build.
Right.
So my question Sharon would be, um, can we, can, as a board, can we give relief and, and give relief for the, under the bylaw to approve this permit? Cause I, I don't see the detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm trying, basically, I'm trying to find a way that we can do this without, um, overstepping our bounds.
Right. Well, the, the issue here is, is, is twofold. One is, we don't want to overstep our bounds. And the other is, we don't want the applicant to be in a situation where we have given him a permit that it is very easy for the neighbors to overthrow in a lawsuit because we haven't done this correctly. So we don't want to put him in a position of building a garage and then having somebody say, I don't like this garage. It isn't legal. You have to tear it down. So we have to make sure that we've given him a, a permit that is worth something for him. And I'm with you on, I, I don't see the detriment to the neighborhood here. And that's why I said, you know, I don't really know why we're not just building a garage, but, um, but I don't know that we have, I mean.
Dude, just to make where the, there's no butters here because, um, every butter I do service their property.
Yeah. I understand Jeremy. I was looking at that snow to see whether you were gonna be plowing my driveway.
And going back to, you know, young families, I mean, um, you know, I have a daughter of my own. Um, I'm not going anywhere. Um, my, um, employees, two of them are Wellfleet natives, um, born and raised. Um, one comes from a big family in town. So, you know, it, it is about servicing the community and, and letting, you know, a young entrepreneur, continuing to, uh, you know, succeed in a successful business in town.
Yeah. How many years have you been operating this business from this location?
Too long.
No.
Technically, I mean, not, you know, unofficial business, but since age 13.
Yep.
I mean, legit, legit business, uh, since 16. Um, so I'm going on my, um, 17th year.
Okay, Jan has a question here.
Through you Sharon, I, I have a question for, Jeremy, you own the Holden Inn as well?
Yes, I do.
I understand Will's point about residence. I think this is a very unusual circumstance. And I don't, I'm not certain, we can't count the square footage of the inn.
Of the inn. That's what I was thinking. Absolutely.
And we can't just do this because you're a good guy. You know what I'm saying? And we want to keep it, we have to do it by the law.
Right.
I don't know that there's anything, I mean, this is a very unusual circumstance where you have this inn and then, you know. But Jeremy owns all of it.
Yeah. And it's such a large lot.
It's a. That's why I asked the question, I'm sorry. That's why I asked the question, you know, what do we mean by principle?
Right.
Well.
Go ahead.
I'm just one vote, but if you read the purpose, it says allow residents to utilize their home as a workplace. So if the inn is, unless you want to shut down the, the inn.
Yeah.
It's not your home. I mean, I mean. It's part of his home.
Well.
And he's included part of his home in his 2,903.
What I was gonna say was, uh, I was on that planning board as well, and you're exactly right, Will. That was the purpose.
But the, isn't the home, his own home for eight months of the year and then for four months it's somebody else's, you know? So you know the time that it sits empty?
I don't, I, I'm with everybody else. I'm not even voting on this, but I, I would very much like to see this go through. But, you know, Sharon's raising a point and.
Yeah. My point is that if this business, if, if the real question is the use, and this use has been around for some time.
Yep.
That if that use is grandfathered, then we can just tell Paul to give him a permit for the garage and we're done. You can't do that. I'd like to.
I mean, I, I'd be happy to be out, out, outvoted. I, I won't lose any sleep over it, you know?
Okay.
Well, can we go, can we just have a vote and then whatever, whatever happens down the road, happens down the road, but at least we're, we're moving it along.
Sure, sure. You just have to, then, then however, I, we have to have, have findings on which we can vote. And I've got to figure out what I'm saying in these findings.
You're very smart. I'm sure he'll.
Well, I'm not very smart. Will wrote most of these. So I'm gonna, um, you know, I mean, here, here's what, you know, I'm, and do you want to, you want to go to findings?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, go to findings.
And I need a second. Okay. And all in favor? Trevor?
Aye.
Mick?
Yep.
Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Okay. So here's what we have and, and, you know, perhaps we can figure out a way to write this. 202102 Jeremy Young, uh, 140 Commercial Street Map 29 Parcel 86 requests a special permit to construct a contractor's shop garage and other outbuildings pursuant to section 6.23 entitled service trade home business, STHB. The applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws are section 5.3.1, section 6.23, and section 8.4.2. In addition to the applicable definitions of service trade home business accessory use, under Wellfleet zoning bylaws, section 2.1, entitled definitions are relevant in reviewing this application. Purpose of the STHB bylaw is to allow by special permit the use of one's residence and associated land for a home business as an accessory use. Accessory use as defined in section 2.1 as a use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the building, of building and located on the same lot with such principal use of building. The applicant proposes to build a two-story 30 by 44 foot in size, two-story structure, 30 foot by 44 foot in size containing approximately 1,815 feet, square feet. With the upstairs. The STHB bylaw provides that the floor area in use by the STHB shall not exceed 30% of the floor area of the principal and any accessory buildings constituting the applicant's residence. Since the underlying purpose of STHB is to allow residents to use their homes as a workplace, the provisions of, um, 6.2.3.2G mandate that the floor area of only the residence used by the applicant shall be used to calculate the maximum square feet that the STHB used may be. The applicant other than himself employs three full-time employees. Um, following is a list of all the equipment and motor vehicles and the number of axles for each in use, used by the applicant for the business. Two trucks with four, two axle, four wheels, uh, two dump trucks with two axles and six wheels each and two 14 inch, 14 foot trailers. The current principal use of the building is as an inn, but a portion of the inn also serves as a residence of the applicant. A square foot used by the applicant as a residence is two, this is where we get into the problem of the, of the numbers. Okay. A square foot used by the applicant as a residence is 2,903 square feet. Section, uh, and 30% of 2,903 is 871. Section 8.4.2 provides that the zoning board of appeals shall not grant a special permit unless it finds that the benefits of the proposal to the town will outweigh any adverse effects on the town as a vicinity, um, taking into consideration the stated district objectives. Section 8.4.2.1, the board finds that the prince, per so's construction is suitable in that it is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the proposed use. Nearby, provided the applicant complies with all the terms and conditions attached to the approval of the application. The board finds that the roads, drainage and other public utilities are sufficient to support the applicant's proposed use. The pro, the board finds that the site for the proposed use will not contribute to environmental damage. Section 8.4.2.2, the board finds that the proposed use will not materially impact peak conjunction, peak congestion, but otherwise will not contribute to the diverse. peak congestion, but otherwise will not contribute to the diversity of services, houses, opportunities or year-round employment. I'm not sure that's absolutely true. Action eight point four point two point three is not applicable. And, um, the applicant has agreed that the following conditions will attach to any approval that may be given by the Welford zoning bylaw, but I don't have what those conditions are right at the moment. So that's what we have because of the numbers, so how do we proceed with that?
Good question. Can we approve these findings as they're written?
No.
No?
Not really, you can't, you can't grant the permit.
You can't grant it.
You have to vote no on the.
Have to vote no on the permit, that's why we can't approve them as written.
So where do we go from here then? Because we're stuck in a conundrum.
Should we ask, uh, town council for their, his, her opinion?
She's gonna just, this one's not one that's very complicated.
Well, because my, my thing is the inn.
Yeah, that's.
If I, would it be included or not?
Well, if you guys want to approve this, I'm gonna vote no. But if you guys want to improve it, just add the square footage of the inn in. And if, if, if four, four out of five folks want, want to do it, then just, just need to change the twenty-nine oh, oh, oh-three figure.
Yeah, I think that makes.
Then it works.
I think that makes the most sense, actually.
Well, can we ask Jeremy, um, if he has that number?
Do you have the square foot of the inn, Jeremy?
That I don't think so.
Well, what about the numbers Trevor came up with earlier?
Well, yeah, the, the relevant number though is, is, is one I got from the applicant.
Okay.
I didn't, but you could get the, you could get the, uh, the square footage numbers off the assessor's cards.
Oh, true.
Right.
I, I, my wife's calling Peter Kane right now.
Okay.
Just look at the assessor's card.
I'll look at the assessor's card.
Add up the two numbers.
Yeah.
Well. Jeremy, are you still there?
Yes.
Still there.
I'll see you, there you are. So did I hear at some point you say that you, you do live in the, uh.
He lives in the inn.
Right, so why shouldn't that be?
I've resided here my whole life.
No, 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 do you, do you actually, during the year, do you live, you and your family live in the inn at any point in time?
So. Year round.
Okay, so then that's.
So why, right.
Yep.
Another point, that's another good point.
Yep, exactly.
All right, the inn it says is three thousand five hundred, if I'm reading that right, net area, but I don't know if that's square footage.
Yeah, that should be right, yes.
Okay, three thousand five hundred and how much is the garage?
Some of all the floors.
And the sum of the sheds?
It's allowed to count.
Fine, Jeremy.
The, the sheds are, um, a hundred and twenty square feet apiece.
Each?
Yes.
So that's two, that's.
And then, and then the garage is twenty by twenty, so that's four hundred square feet.
Two forty and four hundred?
Six forty.
Six forty?
Right.
And thirteen twenty?
Fourteen forty, forty-one forty?
Yeah, and so then we get there, right?
I think we do, yeah.
Yeah, alrighty. So how do we modify the findings to put those numbers?
We change the numbers.
Okay.
Right.
The square foot of the residence is four thousand one hundred and forty square feet, thirty percent of four thousand one hundred and forty square feet.
The residence and the accessory, accessory buildings, put that in.
Yep.
The residence and accessory buildings.
And I believe you should say that the applicant has, uh, indicated that the inn is his principal residence.
Yeah.
Very good.
And so I'm changing this, one that says the current principal, principal use of the building is to say the applicant has indicated.
Yep.
That. Inn is his principal residence.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'll keep my mouth shut, I'm not voting on this.
Yeah. Well, do you want to make it better?
No, I, I, I don't want to say anything.
Okay. Alrighty.
You, 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 you might get disbarred, you know?
Hey, I'm still a member of the bar.
There you go. I used to go to a bar.
I'm still not sure I'm getting the right number. How big is that?
You'd have to count all the, the square footage of all the floors of the inn, the cover, if there's any covered terraces and porches. I don't know that we have.
Uh-huh, so what if I just take both of those sets of numbers out? Do I have to put them in there?
Which sets are those?
Well, if I get five thousand, four thousand one hundred and forty, thirty percent of that is still less than the, than the garage.
So.
We have to include the cottage, so.
Yeah. So what if I just, what we had was, um, the, the, for finding seventeen, the applicant has agreed that the following conditions will attach to any approval, and it is the applicant must comply with all the requirements and standards of Welford zoning bylaws six point two-three point two.
So what you're saying is even.
Paul's problem to check the numbers.
There you go. But if you, if you add all the square footage of each floor of the, of the inn, we get way past the number, right?
Yeah, that's true, I think so, but I don't know what the assessor's card does, does the assessor's card just do the, um.
Assessor's card would be all the floors.
Footprint.
Footprint.
It's all the floors, Trevor, is it?
I thought so.
Okay, so, so we have, we have the inn, we had two, um, two matchboxes and then the garage, but what about the cottage?
All right.
The cottage is not in.
Yep.
So what, what is the cottage? What size is the cottage, Jeremy?
Um, my wife's still on the phone with Peter, he's trying to figure it out.
I thought we were gonna pull out the numbers and just, uh, make a general statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, you're right.
I.
To, to tell you that.
Andy, yes, wait a minute, Andy, Andy wants to say something and he does need to say it.
Please.
Okay. The word principal is important. And. It said that this, this could be subject to appeal, that's obviously what I'm concerned about.
Right.
That's not happening.
I don't exactly know where Jeremy lives at any particular time during the year, I'm a little confused. But whatever it is, he has to represent that the primary, his primary, his principal, I'm sorry, his, uh, principal dwelling is block.
Right.
Whatever it is, it is.
Okay. And the inn is your principal dwelling?
Correct.
Long L-shaped building.
The long L-shaped building.
So I have some numbers for you guys.
Oh yes, good.
Excellent.
So the total of the entire property is fifty-eight hundred square feet.
Okay, that includes the inn, the garage, the cottage.
The two buildings.
And the two.
Sheds.
Sheds. All right. All right.
If you remove the cottage, you're at forty-one hundred.
Yep, okay. If, it, well, that makes us seventeen forty, which would be okay with the garage as it is stated on the application, but not if we are adding a second floor onto the garage.
The second floor, yes, it's gonna be a second floor. But like I stated, it's certainly just storage space.
Yeah, but we still have to, we still have to count that money, you know?
So Sharon, are you saying that if we include the square footage of everything on the property, the inn, the cottage, the residence, the garage, everything? That we're still over thirty percent when we include the second floor of the garage?
Well, what happens is when we, we total it all up to five thousand eight hundred square feet.
Yep.
And when I do thirty percent of that, I get one thousand seven hundred and forty. Check my math, I'm the English teacher.
No, that's fine.
Let me throw something else in here.
Sure.
Jeremy, Jeremy could build this accessory building if he was only gonna store his personal cars in it.
Yes.
So why doesn't that building, this proposed building count? And then when that, when you total everything on that property, including the proposed building, he can only thirty percent of the floor space for his business.
Oh, God, oh, now I'm following you.
Yes.
Yes, Paul.
Very good.
Paul.
Yes, you may have already discussed this, I, my wife thought it was down for a bit, but the, the, actually the definition of an inn in our bylaws, it is, includes all its outbuildings and accessory buildings.
Oh, thank you, Paul, I didn't look at that. So this is just an, another accessory building.
So the, the main thing here is then, if we're talking about use, since you could build the garage by right, what we're talking about is thirty percent of this, these buildings on this property can be used for the business.
Right.
Yeah.
It's home business, yes.
For the home business, so don't store, so store your Christmas decorations in the second floor of the garage.
Don't store, your snow shovel is okay, but nothing else.
Sharon, can I make a correction?
Yes.
So if I, I did the calculations and including the second floor, uh, fifty-eight hundred square feet times thirty percent.
Seventeen. Four.
Seventeen forty.
Yep.
And then you subtract, um, the thirteen twenty, you have four hundred and twenty square feet left. And the second floor is only three hundred square feet. So I still have a hundred and twenty square feet to spare.
Okay, so the total is, um, sixteen twenty, which is, yeah, a hun, which is below the one seven four oh.
Correct.
Sharon, can I just say one?
Sure.
The way this, uh, special permit was stated, the application, it really isn't what's happening. Jeremy's not really asking to build an accessory building, he's asking to, can he run a home business, a, a service trade home business on his property?
Right.
That's what he's asking.
Right.
That's what we're giving him a special permit to do, to run a service home business, in, as long as he can, you know, conforms to all these.
Right. So then what I have is the applicant, um, proposes to build a two-story structure, um, containing approximately a hundred and, one thousand six hundred and twenty square feet. And I have the square feet of the, um, applicant's personal space is five.
Fifty-eight hundred.
Fifty-eight hundred. Um, and so thirty percent is one thousand seven hundred and forty.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
I've, need a motion to accept my very scribbled findings.
I will make a motion to accept the findings.
I will second it.
All right, um, Trevor?
Uh, I, we have further discussion on the findings?
Sure.
I, I don't, I can't accept the finding that, that his personal space is the entire, is every square foot of building on the property.
Right.
Because what does that say about the inn? Um, you know, there's clearly a business use on the property, which clearly accounts for some amount of that square footage. Um, and I think for us to just blatantly gloss over that fact, because it's inconvenient.
Yep.
I don't know, it just doesn't quite sit well with me.
Okay.
That's fine, that, I, you know, if we go back to Jan's point, that, you know, what we're really doing here is allowing him to conduct that business on this property.
Okay, so that, that's fine, then I think we need to take out the findings that reference the, the area.
Space.
And grant him the, the permit to occupy, to, to run the home occup, the service trade home station. And then, and then it's up to, and then quite frankly, it's up to Paul to enforce that.
Right.
That, that, that he can go ahead and build his garage and, and then it's up to Paul to enforce that, that he not use more than thirty percent of the, the area of the business. And if we go that route, I'm fine with that, because we're not making a, a finding that totally flies in the face of what bylaws say.
Yeah, but then the trouble is.
I mean, if you want to be logical about that, the garage is, you don't, you don't even come to us now.
Right.
You built the garage.
Right.
And then you come back to us, because there's no space now, it's just dirt.
Yeah.
Right.
So we, we grant him a permit for the, the service trade and then, and then it's up, yeah.
But can we, can we do that, given that the application was to construct a garage?
Yeah, but it was to construct a garage under the, under that, under the bylaw, the service home business bylaw.
Right.
I mean, I, I.
But I mean, now we're talking, we, we have a, um, we have a, a, an application for a construction permit. And for a special permit for construction, but what we're really talking about is a special permit for a use.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There, uh, Sharon?
Yeah.
I mean, the problem, and, uh, Tre, Tre, Trevor, part of the problem for, for Jeremy's sake, here I am trying to deny and deny his permit, but for Jeremy's sake, if you go your route, someone twenty years down the road could say, you violated this, you can't use this for anything. Whereas if you, if Jeremy wants to be protected, we go back, you, you, you need to change, change your attitude and say, I'm just gonna vote for the damn thing and so be it, and then if someone doesn't appeal, it, it's locked in. But going your route, anyone down, 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 down the road could go to court and, yeah, try to get the court to i- 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 issue a, uh, deceased and assist. So be careful with that, uh.
So.
With that, with that approach, because that could really come back to bite you, Jeremy, big time.
So, so where are we?
Can you guys simply grant me a variance?
Very difficult, Jeremy.
Yeah, much harder to grant you a variance, I mean, the thing is, it's, you can build the garage by right.
Yeah, there's, there's no one contesting this.
We get that.
Yeah, but the, yeah, right now.
I mean, everyone's worried.
Right, right now, there's.
Right now, that's the problem.
Going the route that Trevor indicated, you get a, a future homeowner next door to you with a hair across his or her butt, you got trouble.
Yeah. Somebody who decides to go look for this, well. All right, we got, we got a couple of options here, one is that, you know, we, we jerry-rig the numbers.
Well, you know what, Sharon, I don't think, I mean, I, I do not recommend any numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my, my feeling too.
If, if you're gonna do this, and I'm, frankly, I'm with Will, maybe because we're both lawyers and we see what could happen down the road.
I'm also with Trevor on the numbers too.
You just have to say that, uh, it's the application under blah, 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 and the board has determined that the applicant meets all.
Mm-hmm, yeah, difficult provisions are. The purpose is to allow one to permit to use one's residence and associated land for a home. Yeah, the provisions are, um, the purpose is to allow one to permit to use one's residence and associated land for home accessory use. The applicant, and then we don't go through any of the details, the zoning board shall not get, can, granted unless it finds it that it been, the benefits outweigh the adverse effects, we go through what are the adverse effects, and we add a clause that says the applicant has agreed that he will comply with all the requirements and standards of Wellfleet zoning bylaw six point two point, two, three point two, without any numbers at all.
Okay.
No, I'm looking at Trevor.
I think he's got a problem.
No, I, I think that's the only way to do it.
Yeah. I don't think I go through any of this about trucks or any of it. And I just go straight to this. Do you wanna hear them again, or? Or what?
Let's hear them again.
Okay, all right.
Please.
The applicable provisions, it said, are five point three point one, six point two three, and it's eight, eight point four point two. The purpose is to allow by special permit the use of one's residence and associated land for a home business as an accessory use. Accessory use is defined in section two point one as a use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use of the building and located on the same lot with the principal use of such building. Section eight point four point two provides that the zoning board of appeals shall not grant a special permit unless it finds that the benefits of the proposal outweigh any adverse effects on eight point four point two point one. That construction is suitable and that is compatible with nearby land usage, roads and drains and other public utilities are sufficient. The site for proposed use will not contribute to environmental damage, will not materially impact the congestion, and the applicant has agreed that, that the following conditions will attach to any approval that may be given, the applicant must comply with all the requirements and standards of Wellfleet zoning bylaw six point two three point two, sections A through J inclusive. I need, if you want, then I need an apo, a motion to accept the amended findings.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended findings.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Right. Trevor?
Yes.
Will?
No.
Mick?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And Sharon is a yes. And then, given that, I need a motion to grant the special permit.
I will make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second.
Hi, um, and all in favor, Mick?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Will?
No.
And Sharon, yes. The permit is granted on a four to one vote.
I appreciate this, and, uh, thank you guys for seeing through the regulations and really what matters in this town going forward.
Very good.
Yes, very good, good luck, and, and Paul, now you, you can deal with the garage. But make sure it's not more than twenty-eight feet tall.
That's a look, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Best of luck, thank you. Okay.
Holy mackerel.
Yeah, see, I told you it was gonna be midnight. All right, now the next application is a double. It's, but I think we can take them together, um, it is applications twenty-one oh four, Sarah Robin, application for exemption from flood hazard district regulations, and twenty-one oh five, application for a special permit pursuant to Mass, Massachusetts general law, et cetera, to intensify a pre-existing nonconformity by constructing in addition to an exterior deck and installing a bar, and I think it makes more sense to talk about the, um, addition before we talk about the floodplain exemption, because the floodplain exemption is moot if we don't grant the exemption. Would you agree, Mr. Zander?
I would.
Okay, so, and Will is going to recuse himself, which means he's gone dark and silent. Um, and the board for this will be Manny, Nick, Trevor, myself, and Rifa. So Ben, you're on.
Thank you, Sharon, hello, everybody, it's great to see you all again. This, and, and I'll make this a very, very quick presentation in light of the length of your, your docket tonight. This is an application by Sarah Robin to put an addition on to her existing deck with an awning over it. The addition is shown, um, it's, the, the size of the new deck is roughly twenty-three feet and changed by twenty feet. It stays within the existing encroachments of the building on both the, um, on both the, uh, the north side and, um, on the north side and on the west side, I'm sorry, the north side and the east side. Uh, the purpose of the deck is to provide additional outdoor dining area, which was critical, obviously, this last season, and will be important in the future. The prop, it, 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 the deck doesn't go any closer to the sidelines than the existing deck. It's a, it, it's gonna be constructed by placement of two sonotubes in the ground, and then, and then built out over those and framed out over those, so minimal disturbance to the ground. Um, the, um, you know, there's not a whole lot else I can say about it, you know, um, we'll ask any questions that we can, and thank you.
Thank you, okay, all right, I'll start up there with you, Mick.
I've got no questions right now.
Okay, Jan?
Um, I have a couple, um, has Conscom made a determination regarding this proposal?
You know, Jan, I was, I was looking back in the minutes to see if I could find something, and I, I don't see, I, I don't, the short answer is I don't know.
Yes.
Oh, wait, Sarah Robin just chimed in, she said, yes, they've already approved it.
Did they order, that, did they issue an order of conditions, Sarah? For this?
They, for they, or they issued an order of conditions which were met for the first part of the project. And, um, I don't, I think I'd have to go back and go back with, when, you know, Doug or Hillary through the notes.
Yeah.
To figure out.
I just wondered if they'd issued you something.
No, I, I'm sure they had something, it's just, it was like four years ago. I can get, I can get that information.
If I can jump in, I was at the hearings with the Conscom, and she was approved, I can't remember any conditions straight out.
Okay.
But it was approved.
Okay.
One general question, and I just have a couple others. Um, I don't know for you, Sharon, or anybody else, or maybe through you to Ben, when, when a lot straddles two districts, how do you determine what setbacks to use, from which district?
You, well, you have to apply the more restrictive setbacks in the district, so in this case, um, you know, because we're not going any closer to the sideline, that, no, that, that, the side that this deck is on is in the R district, you know, it's not in the central district. But, um, so the setback in that district would be the twenty-five foot sideline requirement of the zoning bylaw.
And what is it right now, which I can't find on the, on the.
Yeah, it looks to me, you know, it's funny, I'm looking at Tim Brady's plan, I can't quite see what it is, it looks to me like it's about, it looks to me like it's eight feet from the retaining wall to the sideline.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Jan, you're back, I'm back to you.
I'm confused about this plan, you're just asking us about this, not, not this, whoops.
Yeah, I was confused too.
What?
Yeah, I, I couldn't, I, I.
Are you just asking us about this little gray square?
No, I'm asking about where that red square is relative to the side setback, because it doesn't show on this map.
Yeah, it's, and, and the reason we didn't locate that is because it's, because the existing deck, um, that's already on the site, if the board were to look at the, the existing plan of the deck in November twelfth, and then the proposed deck, the existing deck is, is roughly, it looks to me like it's about seven feet closer to the sideline than the, than the addition, so it's.
I see.
Back in, so.
Okay, so it is the eight foot.
Yeah.
But it's, but, but this thing isn't going all the way out to the eight feet.
It, it's not going all the way out, the, the best way to look at it would be to look at the, the two plans dated November twelfth. One is the Flying Fish existing plan, and one is the Flying Fish proposed new deck with bar, and it shows, um, that it's, it's still set in from the existing deck.
Right. Yeah.
Asking us about the ten by thirty point five area, is that correct?
Yeah, hold on one second, let me just, uh, let me, I'm, I'm not sure which plan you're looking at.
I'm looking at one dated, uh, actually it's dated eleven twenty-eight sixteen, a site plan.
Yep. Yeah, the, the area that we're, the area that we're looking at is the, um, it's, um, it's the area, we've submitted a plan that is, is highlighted red with slashes.
Yep.
That's the area where the addition, the additional deck is going to be, it's, it's, it's basically extending further towards the wetland in the back.
Oh, all right, now I get it, all right. Um, there's restrictive covenants that say to, as far as Septic says, two bedrooms, twenty-eight restaurant seats, so this isn't gonna increase the restaurant seats, is it?
It, it, we know it can't, and it won't increase the seating in the restaurant, it just gives, it gives, um, it gives Sarah the ability to seat people outside.
Okay, and people will also be standing around drinking at the bar?
Well, people, people may be, I mean, people that are waiting for tables don't count towards that seating limit, so, and if somebody's sitting at the bar, if people are at the bar, the seats at the bar do count towards as seats in the restaurant.
Will there be seats at the bar? No, that, I see, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And the only other question I have is, do they have outdoor entertainment?
Sarah, yeah, Sarah has previously received approv, received approvals from the Selectment for outdoor entertainment, I'm not sure, Sarah, you can jump in and tell the board what your plans are, or what your historical use of the property is for outdoor entertainment.
Sarah, Sarah keeps getting bumped off, so I, I admit Sarah about every two minutes, so she may have been bumped off yet again, so hold that thought.
Sarah's a long way away right now, um, so I, I, looking back in the records, I saw that there were some permits granted for outdoor entertainment. Entertainment licenses are granted by the Board of Selectmen on an annual basis, so to the extent that she wants to have entertainment on, on the new section, she would have to get a permit from the Board of Selectmen for that.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, all right. Um, I realized that I should have gone to audience and letters first, and I don't have any letters, do I, Chris? Chris, do I have any letters?
No.
I didn't think so, okay, and do I have anyone from the audience who wants to speak on this, and then I'll go back to the board? I think Kathleen, you wanted to, to weigh in on this.
You gotta unmute yourself.
She's working on it. There she is, okay.
Yeah, good evening, um, you fully expect something like this to happen because of COVID. We're, we're, we're gonna see more of this, and it goes to increased use, uh, to some of these businesses, um, that I think, um, in this particular case, you know, it's a pretty tight, uh, situation there. Um, it impacts the neighborhood and the residences, um, and there's very little parking. You know, while it's keep, kept at twenty-eight seats, eventually that interior of the, uh, restaurant will be open for, for seating. And I'm, I'm not in favor of, uh, putting a, a bar, um, outside, you know, again, with regard to the area in the neighborhood. Um, in the past, the Select Board has granted Sarah permission, uh, for entertainment, it's, uh, you know, part of the licensing that the Select Board does, and there's been, um, a number of, uh, noise complaints um, with regard to that outdoor entertainment. So increasing, um, the outdoor use, um, with regard to traffic, noise, and impact on the neighborhood, I just don't think is a, a good way to go in this situation. Um, having said that, I want you to all know that, um, I, I've lived here all my life, and it's really, really difficult to, uh, to, you know, run and maintain a business here in Wellfleet. I'm very grateful for what you were able to do for Jeremy Young. You know, he's, uh, born and raised here, and he's got a great business, and we need to be doing this for all our business people. But we need to be able to do it in a manner that's also respective of the area, the location, the neighborhood, and the impacts, um, that that business will have on, on a specific area. So, uh, in closing, I just wanna say, um, while I appreciate the business, I just think it's the wrong place, the wrong location to go with any more outdoor expansion, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else from the audience? I see no hands, okay, I've been to. Okay, Rifa?
I really don't have any questions at, at this time.
Trevor?
Um, I don't have any questions, I, I, I don't know, I, I, I think I'm listening to what Kathleen said and mulling that over, but, I mean, if she, if Sarah were to, to build a, a brick patio, which she could do without asking anybody for any permission whatsoever, she could have twenty people standing out there on that brick patio with their cups of coffee. And I, and, and the fact that they'd be standing on a wooden deck instead, I, I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know that that makes any difference to me.
Okay, thank you. Andy?
Uh, yeah, I, actually, I have some questions, but probably Sarah is the person who may be best able to.
And she's back now.
Oh, good.
Sarah, I keep admitting you, and you keep.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, that's quite all right.
I have two questions, probably more than two. How many, how many tables approximately do you anticipate putting in this new area?
Um, not, not actually a lot more tables, it's mostly just due, due to the COVID situation, and I'm looking at it, I'm feeling like it has a long-term impact, not necessarily where the rules aren't gonna change, but the mindset is pretty permanent, like, through the season, it was really hard to, people were very.
We're losing you again, Sarah.
Well, that's one question, and the second question is, what did she anticipate, how did she anticipate using the bar?
That was my question.
Okay, Ben, do you have any, any?
I, I, I don't, I can, I can tap dance for a minute before Sarah comes back on.
Sarah's back.
But I, yeah, but I.
Sarah's back, but muted. Sarah?
Unmute.
Unmute, Sarah.
There you go.
Yep. Okay.
Sorry, okay, I'm back, sorry.
Okay, all right, so the questions were, um, how many tables, and also how you anticipated using that bar? And you were in the middle of that when you got cut off.
Yeah, sorry, so, again, that, I, I'm not anticipating many more tables, maybe shifting tables depending on weather, but it's mostly just to separate things out, it's actually not to increase tables, but to just give more space because of COVID, and even when COVID's gone, my customers are nervous about COVID on a very permanent level, and I, you know, I had a, a, more than a handful of complaints about COVID and COVID concerns, and, you know, so I, that's really what we're up against, is, is just giving more space outside.
I understand that, um, but after COVID, I can't wait, I'm sure we all can.
I know.
You still have that deck.
Yeah.
And you'll have capacity to use it, and so I'm trying to figure out what that capacity is, so.
Well, part of, I mean, the biggest thing for me is that I want people to be able to get a coffee and a baked good and sit outside with each other and, and be but feel safe, and, and that's really, you know, my big thing. So, so, and it's always been about more space for people to be, like, have more privacy and still be around each other.
What about the bar, how do you anticipate using that?
Like I would a bar. Like, as opposed to the customers coming in. Like, as opposed to the customers coming inside and, I mean, not the customers, the, for the servers, so that they're not traversing four different staircases and-
Yeah, food's coming from the inside no matter what, but-
Food is coming from the inside no matter what, it's just one less step from my server's to take.
Are you gonna, uh, do you anticipate having stools at that bar?
I like it.
All right, well, that's, I think, Ben, you got the gist of what I'm trying to figure out.
Right.
Yeah, I think, look, the board could always impose a condition that it be used as a service bar. Um, if you're concerned is that it's gonna turn into a, you know, like a nightclub out there, you could certainly impose that type of a condition on it.
Yeah.
We could make a condition that the bar doesn't have any seating.
Yes.
Yeah, no seating at the bar.
Right. Yeah, Manny, did you get a chance to weigh in, I don't think you did.
All, all of my questions have been answered. Up to the bar.
Yeah.
I'm all set, thanks.
Mick, did you get a chance? Did you start or did?
Yeah, no, all my questions have been answered. My, my only concern is that it's at night, that the flying fish gets, can get very loud with the music. And I know the neighbors on Briar Springs or behind, behind Briar Springs, the neighbors are not too happy about that in the summer because it does, it does get loud. My only concern is that you have a bunch of people on a deck, you have an outdoor bars serving alcohol, and it becomes a detriment to the neighborhood. That's my, that's my comment.
I know that's also a question at some of the other restaurants, and I think there are, are noise rules, right?
Right, I mean, I, I, I look at that as an enforcement issue with regards to, uh, the noise bylaws. And, um, to me, the application before us is more for the, the structural construction of the deck.
Right.
Which I don't, I don't have an, an issue with.
And just, just, just to clearly quickly cover the noise thing, um, I'm changing the times and I have a, a really open relationship with everybody in the neighborhood and if there's ever a problem-
That's a terrible collection.
Okay, that answers my question, my concern for alleviated.
Okay. Are you ready for findings on this one?
I will move for filings.
All right.
Second that.
Manny, all right, this is an application under Massachusetts General Law 40A, Section 6, Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.1, to intensify a pre-existing non-conformity by constructing addition to the, an exterior deck and installing a bar. The lot is partially in the Central District and partially in the R1 District. Structure is lawfully pre-existing non-con, lawfully pre-existing non-conforming, having been built in 1963, according to the Assessor's Office. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are inadequate upland lot area and frontage, and intrusion into the side setback, eight feet where 25 feet is required. The proposed addition will extend the deck on the westerly side, there will be no further intrusion into the side setback. The use conforms with the objectives of the CD, uh, Central Dist, and R1 District, as stated in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2. There were no appearances in support of the application, there was one appearance in opposition to the application. The roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the project. I'm saying the project has received approval from the Conservation Commission because I think, Chris, you did say that was the correct, that was true? Yes. Okay, the board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.1, the neighborhood around the locus includes commercial, retail and residential issues which will not be damaged by the proposed project. The property is on Briar Lane, a paved road with adequate pedestrian and vehicle access. It has adequate drainage and access to other public services. The applicant is not aware of any site sensitivity to environmental damage, there will be no construction in the adjacent wetland. Board has found that pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.2, that the proposal will contribute to the diversity of services by allowing additional outdoor dining space. And pursuant to 8.4.2.3, the addition will make no changes that would affect these criteria. The proposed alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity, after considering the district objectives for the district as provided for in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2. That's what I got.
That was good.
Kathleen had her hand up.
I'm sorry, what?
Kathleen has her hand up.
Okay. No, she, no, that's just from before. Kathleen has spoken, Sarah's back. Okay, then I need a motion to accept the findings.
I will make a motion to accept the findings.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, all in favor in my board here is Mick.
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, then, um, I'm holding off on them, we're gonna do the floodplain findings afterward, but first, Trevor, help me on this one, you, we, if we want to impose a condition, we accept the fi, we have accepted the findings, then we move to grant the permit subject to the following condition. Do I read the condition now?
Yeah, yeah, because you can't vote on it.
Right, right, so, uh, we, now then, um, the, we're gonna, the condition we're gonna put on this is that there will be no seating at the bar. The bar will be a service bar.
We need a motion, um, to grant based on the conditions.
Yeah, but I needed to read the condition first.
Oh, okay.
So now that I've read the condition, I need a motion to grant based on that, uh, subject to that condition, right?
I'll make a motion to grant the permit subject to the condition listed where, here in.
Okay, I need a second. Nick?
Yes.
Rita? Trevor?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, that takes care of the first one, 21, um, actually, the second one, 21005. 2104 is simply to grant the floodplain exemption. Um, I don't think we need any discussion on that one. But I could read you the floodplain findings.
Go ahead.
All right, I need a motion-
We have the same board.
We have the same board, same board. And I need a motion to go to findings on the floodplain exemption.
I'll make a motion to go to findings on the floodplain exemption.
And I-
Second.
There are Manny's seconds, all right, uh, all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Rita? Uh, Trevor?
Aye.
And Manny?
Yes.
And myself, yes, here they go. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions for this project. The applicant will build subject to the commission approval findings, condition, the commission's find, conditions. The proposed alteration will not result in increased flood heights, decreased flood storage capacity, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, cause fraud on or victimization of the public or conflict with any existing local laws. And the project will comply in all respects with the state's building code, including requirements of Section 744.0 regarding flood zones. That's it.
Yep.
I need a motion to accept those.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings.
Second.
And all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Rita?
Yes.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye, then I need a motion to grant the exemption based on the findings.
I'll make a motion to grant the exemption based on the findings.
And I need a second, okay, and Mick?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. All right. We're done.
Miss you guys, I'll see you soon, thank you all.
I'm sure we'll see you soon.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye, okay. 2106, Mr. Wiseman, you've been very patient. This is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.1.5.1B to replace the decking with a slightly larger deck within the front setback. And the board, you can, are you back, Will, good?
I'm back, I'm back.
For this is Trevor, Will, Manny, Mick and Jan, I am not voting on this board. Yes, and, and Jan has a com, comment?
I just wanted to disclose that I do live on Indian Neck, but I'm not in a butter or in a butter two and a butter to, to Mr. Wiseman.
Everybody's in a butter two and a butter in Wellfleet.
Yes, that's probably true. All right, Mr. Wiseman, you are on. Could tell us about your project.
So, uh, this is a family home that was built in 1964. There's a deck on the front of the house. The existing deck is non-conforming, it's, uh, 29.6 feet from the edge of the right of way where the setback required is 30 feet. The deck, finally, after 50-something years, needs to be replaced. And I would like to increase the width by two and a half feet, which will bring it to 27.3 feet from the edge of the right of way. So, a, a little more non-conforming than it used to be, but still non-conforming. And I'm asking for a special permit to do that.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one letter in support of this, um, from Eric Siegler, regarding application 2106 from Stephen Wiseman. My wife and I have no objection and fully support Mr. Wiseman's application to reflect, replace the current decking with a slightly larger deck on 105 Fox Island Road, which abuts my property at 79 King Philip Road. Is anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this? Okay, if not, I will go to the board, I'll start on this trend, Trevor.
Uh, this, I have no questions or issues with this, it seems pretty benign to me.
And Andy?
Close that I am, uh, in a butter of it and butter, and I walk by this house probably at least twice a week. The only question I have is, on the second page of the application, it says, Conservation Commission makes negative determination on 11/24/2020. I think I know what Mr. Wiseman means, but I'm not sure, what do you mean by negative determination?
Oh, so, um, so, under, uh, the Wetlands Protection Act Form 2, there's a, a question about whether a, um, let's see.
I know what the issue is, I'm just wondering what negative means.
Negative means no further action is required by the applicant.
Okay, and that was, and that was, so you went to them to increase the size of your deck and get closer to the, uh, 100 feet of, uh, wetlands, correct?
Correct, I'm within, I'm between the, uh, 50-foot and 100-foot buffer.
Yeah. I know where you are, okay, that's all I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, Nick?
I don't have a problem with this.
Dan?
Oh, no question.
Manny? You're muted, Manny.
No question.
Okay, Will?
Look fine to me.
Rita?
Aye.
And I have no questions on this one, so I need a motion to go to findings.
I'll make a motion to go findings.
Okay, and?
I'll second it.
Okay, and Jan, you have those findings, I'll let you read them.
21-06, Stephen Wiseman, 106 Fox Island Road, map 28. Parcel, uh, 228, application for special permit under WBZL 6.1.5.1B to replace decking with a slightly larger deck within the front setback. One, this is an application for a special permit to allow for the replacement of an uncovered deck with a slightly larger uncovered deck, parentheses, hereafter referred to as the addition, within the front setback. Two, the dwelling is entitled to treatment as a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been built in 1964, according to the Assessor's Office. Three, the dwelling is pre-existing non-conforming as to minimum, minimum front yard setback distance, parentheses, 29.6 feet at closest point to Fox Island Road where 30 feet is required. Four, the dwelling is built on a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming lot in the residential one, parentheses, R1 zoning district, and in parentheses again, 19,001, 871 square feet where 30,000 is required. Five, the ZBA has inspected the property and has reviewed all plans, drawings and other documents submitted with the application. Six, the applicable provisions for this application under the Town of Wellfleet Zoning Bylaws, WZBL, are Sections 5.4.1, minimum lot requirements, and in parentheses, 30,000 square feet in R1 District. 5.4.2, minimum yard requirements, parentheses, front setback 30 feet in R1 District. 6.1.5.1B, alterations of a non-conforming single-family dwelling which increases the non-conformity, and 8.4.2, special permit granted criteria. Seven, the addition will increase the intrusion into the front setback by 2.3 feet, in parentheses, 27.3 feet where 30 feet is required. There will be no volumetric increase. The addition will increase building coverage from 6.5% to 6.8%, and in parentheses, 15% lock coverage is allowed. 10, there will be no change in use. 11, there will be no, you, there will be no increase in use. 12, the project received a negative determination from the Conservation Commission on 11/24/20. Is that accurate to state it that way? Is that good enough?
Yeah. I think so, unless you want to say, um, in parentheses, no further action required.
Okay.
Just so that nobody's confused about what negative means, and they don't think that-
There, there, there must be a doctor in the crowd, you know?
I don't like, I don't like negative in anything, so there you go.
Negative.
Number 13, there was one letter in support of the application.
Right.
There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. 15, there was no objection from the abutters. WBZL 3.2, the board finds that the use conforms with the objectives of the R1 District as stated in WZBL 3.2. 17, WZBL 6.1.5.1B, the board finds that the addition will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming deck. And 18, WZBL 8.4.2, the board finds that the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity, that the addition will not contribute to environmental damage, that the roads, drainage and other public services are adequate for the addition, that the addition will not affect, uh, diversity of services or housing opportunities or have seasonal consequences, and that there will be no adverse effect on scenic views, existing parking areas or traditional public access to or along the shoreline. The end.
Nicely done.
I will move to accept the findings. I will second that.
And Mick will second that, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, then I need a motion to grant the permit based on the findings.
I'll make a motion, grant the special permit based on the findings.
Okay.
I want to-
He beat you. It was Jan seconded it, all in favor, Mick?
Aye.
Mick?
Yep.
Jan?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And Trevor?
Aye.
Okay, um, and Mr. Wiseman, Chris will get stamped paperwork for you and put it in a, um, in the buildings thing eventually. Um, and you're, and you're in the box outside the building department because that's the only way we can communicate these days. Um, and I did want to say, Mr. Wiseman, that I appreciated the thoroughness of your application.
Thank you very much.
This, this was the one in my pile that got a gold star.
Chris is a good teacher.
Yes, exactly, thank you. Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Twenty-one oh seven, Todd and Lori Labarge, one ninety-five Briar Lane, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw five point four point two and five point four point four to turn the third-story attic space into habitable space. And the board for this one will be Manny, Mick, Will, Trevor, and Andy. Okay, and I think Mr. Labarge is somewhere.
Hey, everyone.
Here. Hi there, there he is. Yep. Found you.
Hi, so this project is just a matter of going to finish in the existing space up in, on the third-floor attic. And I was referred because of the third floor in the zoning bylaw, not having a habitable space, so we're just going to turn that third-floor attic space into a usable habitable space.
Okay, all right, and is there, we had no letters, I don't think. Chris? No letters, and is there anyone here who wants to?
No, no letters.
And no, does anyone in the audience want to speak to this application? All right, hearing nothing, I will go to Trevor.
Nothing yet, skip me.
Okay, all right, Rita?
This doesn't change the height of the building, right?
No, no exterior, it's all interior.
All interior, okay.
Okay, and the height of the building is already above the zoning bylaw, but it's, it's a historical building. It's, it's grandfathered. It's an existing nonconforming. Okay, Will?
I have no, I have no questions.
Okay, Manny?
I'm all set with this. I think it's, it's within the same footprint, so it's no problem.
Jan?
Mr. Labarge, you cut in and out a little bit. I'm still, if you're not changing anything on the exterior, I'm still unclear as to why you got referred to the zoning board?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm trying to figure out why he's even.
The existing building is in the setback. I don't think there's any side plan here about the, you can just increase within a setback.
There's no increase, there's no volumetric increase.
An increase of habitable space in a setback.
Do, do we have a bylaw about that?
I don't.
I'm, Paul, through you, Sharon, Paul, is, I'm not recalling, there's something about that in the bylaw, but maybe I missed it.
Well, it certainly would be if we were, if we were adding a third floor.
But is it even your purview if nothing was changing on the exterior?
Right now, it's attic space, it's being changed to living space within a setback, so it's an increase of habitable square footage within a setback. That's the way I look at it, my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Manny, I mean Mick?
Yeah, again, I'm, I get why Paul referred it to the board, but I think in this case that this can be done by right, and we really don't need to issue a permit on this. So, which has happened before on the board, where we've had somebody come in front of the board and found that they were well within their, the rights where they happened to apply for a special permit, and we refunded their fees and permits. So if the board finds that we don't need to issue a permit on this, I would recommend that we would refund the fees to the applicant. That's all I got.
Okay, and Andy?
I have nothing, but I, it seems to me that I'm, I'm not sure I understand why there was a requirement. Am I muted? No. Why there was requirement for a spec, for an application for a special permit?
So you're sort of where Trevor is as well, that you don't see a requirement for a special permit here?
No, do I?
Yeah, but I could be wrong. I mean, if
I don't have a problem with it being referred to the board out of an abundance of caution, but the board can find that it doesn't need to come in front of us, which we've done before. So I think that's where I'm at right now, is just make the findings that it doesn't need to be in front of the board. And then in that case, what we've done in the past is we've asked, we've refunded the applicant their permit fees and so on, because we found that it didn't need to go in front of the board.
Okay.
Now, my only comment is, is I haven't read this, I haven't read the bylaws to know, to know that. So I, I would not be willing to say you don't need to be here, just because I haven't read it all with, with that issue in mind.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I don't underst, I mean, if there is a bylaw, I, I don't know what bylaw it is, that's all.
Right. Right, and, and I'm saying the same thing, so since I don't know what bylaw it is, I'm not going to say you don't, you don't need it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would have had to read the whole by, the whole, the whole shooting match to see if there's someplace there, you know?
But the application in front of us is for WZV five point four point two and five point four point four. And we don't, it doesn't need to meet those criterias, because it's not, it's not a volumetric increase of the building, so.
Right. Yeah, the, the, but we, we don't have to go combing through the whole bylaws. We have to go based on what the applicant, what it's before us. And that's, as Mick says, it's, it's five point four point two and six point one point five point, so does it need those? Yeah. Now, it is higher than it's supposed to be.
Because that's grandfathered in, it's been that.
Yeah, and, but I mean, does it?
But it hasn't changed.
Yeah.
It still remains the same.
Right, okay. You know, so?
Well, I would make a, I would make a motion that we find that we, that this application doesn't meet five point four, and that it doesn't need to come in front of the zoning board, and I would also make a motion that the town refunds the applicant's fees for the special, for the permit, which we have done in the past, whenever we found that. In the interest of fairness.
Do I have a second on?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, well, then I'm going to ask for a vote on that, I need discussion on that motion. Okay, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Andy?
Aye.
Okay, all right, Mr. Labarge, you don't need a special permit, and?
You're all set?
You're all set.
Very much.
You're welcome.
There you go.
All right, moving right along. Kelly Chapman Maderos, twenty-one oh eight, application for a special permit pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaws six point one point five point one B to rebuild a one-bedroom cottage where the last cottage was, and the board for this will be Will, Trevor, Manny, Mick, and myself.
Sharon, I'll sit this one out, because when I went to drive past it, there was snow and ice on the ground, and I didn't actually get out of my truck, so.
Oh, come on.
Dude, it was freezing.
Yeah, I drove in there and I couldn't get out of the driveway.
I drove by and I wouldn't get out of my truck.
When we, when we arrived, because we had two cars.
Am I in trouble already?
When, when we arrived, Mr. Maderos was concerned that we'd had a fender bender in front of his house, because he didn't know why we were stopping there.
Also, for the board, my wife knows Mr. Maderos very well, and we grew up together, so I think it's right that I sit this one out, okay?
All right, okay, all right, Jan, I'll put you on this one.
I drove by three times, but I didn't get out either, so if that.
Then I'm going to put Rita on. I know she saw the whole hole.
Hi there.
Okay, so it's, so Chris, it is myself, Will, Trevor, Manny, and Rita. Okay, all right.
Am I on now? Okay, forgive me. So, good evening, thank you so much for taking the time. So I'm requesting a special permit to replace a two-bedroom cottage with a one-bedroom, well, two-bedroom year-round cottage with a one-bedroom year-round cottage that I'd like to build for currently my mother, who needs to, to have special care. Our property line setback is no closer for the proposed cottage. In fact, it was nineteen point six feet now, and it was, the old was nineteen point four, so we moved it a little bit further from that eastern boundary. The lot coverage, I do acknowledge, has increased by a tenth of a percent total from nineteen point five to nineteen point six percent. But there's no change of use, and we did get approval on December fourth, twenty twenty, from the Conservation Commission and with no conditions. So we also have an approved septic inspection, obviously, for that as well, on December second, two thousand twenty. So I think, in the interest of time, I'm ready for questions. I also have my architect, Francis Sullivan, here to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer, because I, I'm new at all this, so thank you for your time.
Okay, and is there any, we had no letters, I don't think. Is there anyone who wants to speak to this from the audience? Okay, all right, I will start with you, Will.
Well, I mean, you, your, your application says there was a, a slight decrease in the setback at one corner of the premises, or, or has that changed? I couldn't quite figure it out myself, to tell you the truth.
So when we, to be honest, when we went through the Conservation Commission, I don't know whether misguided is the appropriate word, but we didn't know that we needed to come to the zoning board, because our engineer had, we had increased that setback for that eastern sorry, boundary. But when Paul looked at it, I don't know, Paul, if you wanted to clarify, there was that increase in that northeastern corner towards that, that boundary, so I can't explain it, but that's why I'm here, I think, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're in the setback, and the, I don't have a plan in front of me, I believe, a side setback. It was nineteen feet where twenty-five is required.
And the old one was twenty-three point three.
Three point three, and the new one is at somewhere, yeah, nineteen point six.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be, we, we kind of moved everything away, but with that difference and change in footprint, it added.
No, that, that, that was my only question, comment.
Thank you.
All right, Manny?
I think this is a win-win situation, going from two bedrooms to, to one bedroom. You never see that. And then moving away and gaining on the setbacks. I don't have any problems with this at all.
Okay, Trevor?
The, the existing cottage was built in nineteen seventy, according to the Assessor's map?
Yeah, so it was kind of added on to. It was originally built by my grandfather for his brother, and then I actually grew up there in the early seventies. So as things kind of added on, I don't know where the nineteen seventy date came from, but I'm guessing that is when the last addition was added on, which was the, probably the most northern part of that, the old cottage.
The original was nineteen forty-five, I think, right?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. I'm the, I'm the fourth generation to live in this, this home, so my mom's going to go back to where she brought me up and where she grew up, so I think it's, it's kind of cool. Sorry for the nostalgia, but.
My ultimate question is that two dwelling units on the property, that, that's been a pre-existing condition for a long time.
Yes, and they have only been used for year-round rentals, and in the future, moving forward, that's how they would be used if, and, you know, when my mom passes, it will only be year, used for a year-round rental.
And this wouldn't, and this is a question more for the board, but this wouldn't need to be affordable, because it, because of its pre-existing status.
Right, right, because, because it's been there so long.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was my only, that was my only question.
We do our best to make it as affordable as possible, because if, with a one-bedroom, it would be only one person or a couple. So, and it is in my backyard, so we like to, to make sure that they're comfortable and, and can, you know, afford what they're.
Yeah. I have no further question.
Thank you.
Okay, Rita?
Hi, the question about the Conservation was what Conservation Commission has been answered, and that was my concern.
Where have I not been now? Manny, I, did I talk to you? Jan?
Yes.
Because I didn't get out of the car, although I drove, I just want to make sure I understand. There's, there's a little cottage off to the right, but yes, you're talking about the year-round, I mean, that's been removed, right?
It has been, yes, it has been. It's demolished. It's a big hole now.
There's a hole in the ground.
The hole is the ground. It's all pinned, ready to go.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, and Andy?
That's kind of as a good segue into my only question, because I did go over this afternoon, and as I said, I got stuck and almost hit that big tree on the way down.
Sorry.
It's not your fault.
I know. Well, it is, because I'm here asking for a special permit.
Really isn't, doesn't have any legal relevance, but I was just sort of curious as to what the old cottage, the one that's torn down, looked like, and I'm looking through the Assessor's cards.
Yes.
And if you have them in front of you.
I do. It is the, um, okay.
The one with the two bedrooms?
It's the two-bedroom, seven hundred and sixty-six square foot, the one with the deck and the slider, with the window on the top.
Okay, I see it, got it.
The only thing that you're not seeing in that, in that picture is the bathroom off to the right, which you can see in the schematic to the right. Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Did I get round to everybody, except Mick, who was sitting out this one? Okay.
I will move for finding the fact.
Okay, all right, I need a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Trevor? And myself, hi. Twenty-one oh eight, Kelly Chapman Maderos, two seventy Holbrook Avenue, map fourteen, parcel one hundred and sixty-eight, request for a special permit to permit an existing cottage to be raised and replaced with a new cottage, the proposed cottage. The application's for a special permit to allow for the proposed cottage to be constructed in place of an existing cottage that was constructed in nineteen forty-five. The property of the applicant contains a total of sixteen thousand six hundred and forty square feet and is located in the R one zone where thirty thousand feet is now required. The existing cottage to be removed, actually, who has been removed, is nonconforming in that the rear setback required is thirty feet, and part of the existing cottage is located nineteen point four feet from the rear property line. The maximum building coverage in the R one zone is fifteen percent, and the building coverage currently existing is nineteen point five. The proposed cottage to be constructed is seven hundred and fifty feet in square feet in size, and replaces the existing cottage, which is seven hundred and sixty-six feet in size. The raising of the existing cottage and the construction of the proposed cottage would result in a reduction in lot coverage from nineteen point five percent to nineteen point four percent. The construction of the proposed cottage will reduce the current nonconforming rear setback along much of the easterly side of the proposed cottage, but will result in a small increase of how many feet in the nonconformity of the rear setback. I think you said it, Kelly, but I'm.
I think, is it fourteen square feet total, Francis? Is that what it was? You're muted. You're mute, you're muted. I just want to make sure that I'm accurate in that.
Yeah, hi, did you, were you talking about the setback?
Yeah, on the, oh, it's increasing.
It's not square feet.
Yeah, just feet. Along the eastern side would result in a small increase of how many feet in the nonconformity of the rear setback?
The, the decrease, and it goes
Yeah, the, the.
Nineteen point four to nineteen point six, so it's improving the situation.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, small decrease.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Decrease in the intrusion. Decrease in the intrusion.
Nineteen point four to nineteen point six. Okay, good, all right. The applicant has received Conservation Commission approval. The applicable provisions of, for this application under the town of Wealthy zoning bylaws are section five point four point two, and section five, six point one point five point one B, and section eight point four point two. On section four, eight point four point two point one, the board finds that the proposed cottage is compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged. The board finds that the roads, drainage, and other public utilities would not be affected by the construction of the proposed cottage. The board finds that the proposed cottage will not contribute to environmental damage. And eight point four point two point two, the board finds that the construction of the proposed cottage contributes to housing opportunities. And eight point four point two point three, the board finds that the building and site design will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring projects, properties. And six point one point five point one B, the board finds that the replacement of the existing cottage by the proposed cottage is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure.
I do need to add one thing, though.
Yes, okay.
You, you misstated the square footage of the new cottage, or the replacement cottage.
Okay.
Seven hundred and fifty, it should read seven hundred and eighty.
Seven hundred and eighty, so it's actually getting bigger.
Yes.
And it's replacing the existing, which is seven hundred and sixty-six, so you're increasing the lot coverage to, to what?
That was stated correctly.
That was stated, yep.
Okay.
So it goes from nineteen point six, five percent to nineteen point six percent.
Okay, yeah. What's confusing to me is that, in both cases, we've got nineteen point five and nineteen point six, but they go in different directions.
I picked that up as well.
Let me, so I did, let me, Jason Ellis provided, um, yeah, that's weird, should be.
Yes, I thought that was strange, you know?
I suppose I can do the.
Well, I see the nineteen.
No bother, no bother.
No. I see the nineteen point six. And I guess before it was nineteen point five. I'm okay.
Okay.
I think it's okay.
Math error.
Just, just, just lots of, uh, lots of the same numbers. Okay, those are my findings. Not my findings, actually, they're Will's findings.
I'll move to accept the findings.
I read a second.
I second.
Rita seconds, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wait a minute, you're not done yet. We have to go, wait a minute, we have to go one more step. I have, we have to grant, grant you, all we've got is findings right now. Now I need a motion to grant you a special permit.
We could still deny you.
We can love the findings and still not give you the permit.
I will move to grant the special permit.
Rita, did you second that? Yes, all right, Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. Now you can go.
Thank you so much for your time. Good night. Stay safe. Take care. Bye-bye.
All righty. I'm backing now. Now, we've got Zachary Mint for Old Bank LLC, um, we have two, two cases here. I'm gonna have the same board for both of them, which is Manny, Mick, Will, Trevor, and myself. The first is for an amendment, and the, well, the first is for a sign variance, and the second is for an amendment. I, my notion would be to go with the amendment first, since it's the older of the two, but I have no preference. Anyone in the board have preference on that?
Makes no difference to me.
Okay, well, let's deal with the amendment first, okay? So, Mr. Mint, you're on.
Hello, nice to see you all.
Nice to see you.
So the amendment, um, I think that this is somewhat expected by the board. The last time seemed like forever ago that I saw you all, I was granted a special permit for a cannabis retail establishment in the main building at Ten Main Street. And the board reasonably had questions about what was going to happen at the auxiliary building, which at the time had just been abandoned. Well, I wouldn't say, I don't want to use the word abandoned, because I think that'll be a subject of this discussion. It had just been vacated by She Sells Seashells, uh, retail. We were permitting a second retail use at the site, and, and we left that out of the scope of the, of the discussions, because I wasn't sure what I wanted to do with it from a business point, point of view, and because I didn't have the resources and scope to renovate it. So here we are, we finished the renovation, and we're working on our final license and planning on opening pretty soon, and the building came out so nice that it sort of wished we had done the whole thing and done that building as well. And also, there's, COVID happened, and that changed the business need, the immediate business need, I wouldn't say long-term. So long-term, the plan is still tentatively to use it as another retail use, much like She Sells Seashells or some other health-related shop. But in the meantime, I would love the flexibility to be able to use, put some windows in the front there and be able to service people, which is something the Cannabis Control Commission has temporarily allowed, for people that don't feel comfortable going inside. So that's why it's such a long-winded application. It was tough to, um, word that way. But the result is, it's more square footage than I originally asked for, so it requires more parking. And so I went back to the engineer and said, can you redesign the parking? Do we have enough parking for this? He said, of course, and here's a, here's a design. Here's how you can park the cars. And so that's what's in front of you. I've included, um, the elevation of the windows, how they would be. It would just be replaced, for now, it would just be replacing the windows on that front facade with something that matches the original. I'm not sure what else. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. I hope that explains it.
Right, and I did want to tell the board that because this now had more parking, we did refer to the planning board as a development of significant impact, and our recommendation from the planning board is that at their February third meeting, the Wealthy Planning Board discussed the above property and voted. And this is kind of a strange comment, but they voted, they were fine with the plan, but what the condition they wanted was that one access, as shown at the southeast corner, remain, and only one egress be allowed at the southwest corner on Main Street, and that both access and egress be properly marked with signage. They were not concerned about the, um, the additional parking. Okay, and is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this, this application? Seeing no hands, I will go to the board. Manny?
Well, the use has always been there, so I don't see, um, I don't have a problem with returning that back to, uh, retail. That's all I got, as long, it meets the parking and everything requirements. So I don't have any problem with it.
Thank you. Will?
Has the park, has the ingress, or have the ingress and egress changed according to what the planning board requested, or?
No, I was, may I, sure?
Yes, sure.
No, I was surprised by the recommendation, since the current traffic, the proposed traffic pattern is the same as it's been for my whole life.
One way in and one way out.
Changing, I'm, I'm shocked at that recommendation, and I would wanna, before you change something that's been some, a certain way for fifty years, I think it's better to do a little bit of research on whether it's better.
Good, thank you.
And, and what was the original? I thought you had just one egress and one in.
Well, there's one, one egress, I mean, one, 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 I, I don't know egress, ingress, exit, one exit only. And one, enter, exit. There's a larger curb cut closer to Route Six.
For an enter and exit.
That we actually, in the last special permit, decreased by ten feet. It was so big to make room for the handicap parking. So that's still there, but still thirty feet or more, more, more than enough for two lanes of traffic. And then the, around the other way, um, is exit only.
I see.
With a do-not-enter sign.
Okay, all right. Okay. Rita?
I have no questions.
Nick?
Yeah, it's, it's, is this going to increase the traffic in and out of your business, running a marijuana dispensary? And then adding retail into that, Zach? How do, how much traffic do you expect to increase?
Um, none. The, the, the original use that was there was retail use, and then our use is the marijuana use on top of that. It would eventually revert back to that, but in the meantime, it would be less, because we're not allowing people inside. Okay. And so the people would be serviced outside instead of inside temporarily. Later on, if we were to use, make it a separate store.
Yeah.
Back to the way it was.
Yeah.
When it was two separate businesses.
I just, I understand that, because I, I remember on the original hearing that you came in front of us, and we had a long discussion about traffic, uh, increased traffic due to the nature of your business. And my only concern was, you're gonna run another retail business separate from the dispensary, and how much that would increase the traffic flow in and out, in an already challenged situation. I know you don't have a.
No, I think, I mean, what I would, what I would say, if it's all right, what I would say to that is that, that the, what we talked about in terms of the traffic from the marijuana store was increased, was just that. It was increased traffic on what was there before, and so this was there before.
Again, that, that's.
And I'm talking about putting it back. So, yeah, yes, again, we would be adding some sort of traffic, but I don't know how much traffic you'd get from a three hundred square foot, um, boutique.
Yeah, that's, that's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, Trevor?
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if I understand, maybe, maybe I just zoned out for a while, but is the, is the application to add that small building to part, to the, to the marijuana business? Or is it to re-establish it as a second, a second retail business?
It's to have the flexibility to do either.
Okay.
Because, because I think that it's needed now for COVID, they, they, and then, but, but ultimately, that's not, I don't think that that will be necessary. I think that it's, it's too much square footage for, for the cannabis use. I just don't think it would be needed. So we'd like to have, be able to do something else that's not under the jurisdiction of the Cannabis Control Commission, which makes it hard to do really anything else.
When we approved the special permit for the dispensary, that small building was operating as a retail business at that time? This is a question for the board, I guess.
It was closed.
Yeah, it had just closed for the winter.
But our expectation was that it would continue to operate as a retail business.
No.
Oh, what we said, well, I, I, if I'm remembering correctly, at the time, um, the applicant said, you know, at the moment, he had no plans for the retail, but he might want to come back to us at some point to re-establish this, because he wasn't, he just wasn't in a position to make a decision right then. And so this is what this is. This is the, I'm coming back, because I, now I know what I want to do with that.
Yeah, 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 right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that sounds very familiar, yeah.
Did you have anything else, Trevor, on this one?
No, I mean, I guess that, you know, the first question that comes to my mind then is, is parking. I mean, if we, is the, does the, the parking plan accommodate that, re-establishing that as a retail business?
Yeah, it's considerably more parking than it was in the original plan. It's gone from, what, nine to twenty, is that correct?
The requirement is from nine to twenty, the actual shown is fourteen to twenty. The requirement from, excuse me, the requirement from nine to, to nineteen, and the shown went from fourteen to twenty.
To twenty, right, yeah.
So we magically found.
More parking spaces. Yeah, so, and, yes, it does meet the square footage requirements for the parking.
And then I should also say, because it, just to, in fairness to this conversation, it also includes, we also did not calculate the second floor of the building, as being, being calculated at all, because it was advised to me by the former building inspector to call it, to have that be personal space if I didn't need it for the business. Now, I would like to be able to use that for employees as well, for offices, for the business. So that's why the square footage is so much higher. It's not just the three hundred feet. It's the entire second floor that's being included in the retail's, um, calculation now for, for parking.
Yeah, that's why you've gone up, and now you have a lot more spaces. But you have included that in, in what you've counted for, and what you need for spaces.
Right.
Andy?
Yes, I have, um, a few questions. The applicant is representing that initially he's intending to use Retail B, three hundred and fifty-four square feet. I believe that's the structure he's talking about, as a, uh, part of his marijuana business. However, it's also indicated that it, it may well be post-COVID that he will not need that space, and he would like to sublet it out to another business. And, uh, so I share whoever it was who was talking about traffic, I believe it was Mick. Again, I don't know, you never know what, what could go into three hundred and fifty-four square feet, but, uh, it'd be something that everybody loves, and, uh, there could be a lot more traffic. So that's, that's a concern, and so I, if I would, I would have a condition on this. The second thing is, has to do with parking. The only document that I have that shows any parking is this, um, document from Bowler. Looking for a date, but whatever it is, it, it only shows about, I, before I counted it, but certainly doesn't have the requisite number of spaces that we're talking about. And so I'm wondering where the applicant believes he can find the extra spaces, or maybe I didn't count right, I don't know.
Are you looking at C three oh one?
Yep.
On the bottom?
Yep.
So the circles with the numbers in them are the number of spaces in that cluster.
Yep, six and four is ten, and two, and two is, uh, right, fourteen.
And three.
Oh, great, I see. Got it. I didn't realize that those twos were parking spaces. The ones up by Main Street.
Right, so the handicap are two, and then there's two tucked in behind the sign.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for that. All right, I don't have any other questions.
All right. Have I been round? Jan, did I? No.
I've got a question, my own chairperson to you.
Okay.
So the board is being asked to grant a special permit for a business that we don't know what it is that's going to go in there. So I don't, we've never done that before. I mean, I, I'm, I'll be honest with you, Zach, I'm, I'm a no on that. If you want to increase of the, the marijuana dispensary and, and your cannabis business, I don't have a problem with that at all. But to put another business in that we don't even know what it is, which will create a lot more traffic coming off six, which is a really difficult area, and you guys did a great job at the last hearing about explaining what you were going to do if there was a problem with traffic. You would either go to appointments, or you'd have a police person, but you're having a business that I don't even know what it is. So I'm not going to grant a special permit on something that I don't even know what it is. If you wanted to have a continuation of the marijuana business, I have no problem with that whatsoever. If you wanted to have a continuation of the marijuana business, I'd have no problem with that whatsoever. So that's where I'm at.
May I, may I respond to that quickly?
Sure.
Um, I would say that I, I could tell you what I envisioned putting in there, but I think it would just be disingenuous to give you exact facts on that, because right now it's to do a takeout, to do a window service for the marijuana business. And that, I should also say, is subject to Cannabis Control Commission approval, so it's not something that's going to happen right away.
Yeah, well, I get that because COVID is a big game changer for businesses everywhere, and they are allowing pickup.
Yeah.
So I don't.
It's a general idea, and I said this last time, so it's really not, not a change, is it would be a boutique of sorts, health-related, CBD oils, herbs, things that I can sell as a regular, as a retailer, but not as a cannabis.
I, I get what you're saying. I just don't want to see some souvenir shop or something. I, I don't think that's appropriate right next to your business, so I would like to see a specific.
I have to give you a specific plan for that, I understand.
I, I can only speak for myself. I'm just one member of the board, and I, I'm in favor of what you're doing, but I would need to know what's specific on that. I just, I'm not comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead, whatever, whatever you want in there. And that's, that's just me. I'm just one member of the board.
And if what you, what Zach wants to do is to just use it for his own business, he does not need any amendment to our special permit right now, does he?
Yeah, yes, he, he would, well.
He would?
Yeah, I think so.
Absolutely.
He needs an amendment, but perhaps he could restrict his amendment to, at this point, only say that it's for expansion of his own business or what.
Right.
Right, and I believe, I believe that's exactly the way that his proposed amendment is worded right now.
Yeah, I know, but he says sup, potential sublet to somebody else.
Yeah.
And when we did the findings on the first application, we made sure we crossed every T and dotted every Y. Feature of the business, and we still need to do that now. And saying you want to sublet it to somebody without knowing what that's going to be.
Oh, I see.
I, I have a problem with that. That's, and I'm just one member of the board, but I.
Maybe, I mean, maybe it's this, he, we need to ask him to amend this to strike the part that says, "Or be sublet to another."
Right.
That's my whole thing.
Retailer. May I ask a question?
Sure.
This is my fault. I didn't bring counsel or don't have it, but can I just ask the board's opinion about if I, if I were to strike that at this time? Would that anyway restrict me from coming back and proposing to sublet it to a different business in the future?
No, you would just need to re.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then that, then I, I would love to do that.
Okay, Will had a question. Will, Will wanted.
Yeah. I have a comment. I mean, if we, if we approve retail space, we approve retail space. I mean, you could have, let's say, Zach, you had someone who's going to sell lampshades, and they really were. So you say, oh, sure, we'll sell you for lamp, 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 lampshades. And two years later, they go out, out of business and someone wants to sell seashells.
Baskets.
Well, they don't need to come back before, I mean, hopefully. I mean, that's why if, if a business changed in town on, on Main Street, that, you know, they're selling dresses one day and books the other, they, they don't need to come back bef, before us.
But this isn't just.
I, I don't agree that we, we get to, I mean, it, it's sort of silly to say, well, anyway, I, I've made my point. I just don't think we're in, 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 in the business of determining what goes into a re, your retail space.
It's not just some business changing what it sells. It's one business going to two businesses.
Right, it's two, two businesses.
Another thing, it's one business going to two businesses.
Right.
But all I'm saying, if he, if you, we approve it now just for the marijuana shop, that's fine. But if Zach comes back in in, you know, three years and says, I'm going to sell lampshades, and they go out of business, do they need to come back in and?
Yes.
You know, for approvals to get seashells? I don't.
No, I think.
There's a place in the zoning ordinance that talks about that.
I don't think it's the, it's the retail piece. I think it's the fact that it's two, it's the sublet. So that we have two businesses on the same, which goes to Mick's point about, if it's all used for the one business, then they have one set of traffic. If it's two businesses, they have two sets of traffic.
I mean, what, what he could say is he wants to increase the square footage of his, for his business.
Right.
That would be, that would be the amendment. And that, that would, that would be the application.
Right, which brings us full circle to, he strikes the sublet part, and then that's what.
Yeah, so.
Then asking, here we go.
I, at first I was, this made sense. I'm, I'm reluctant to do that because I think the point, and, and I'm not the, the landowner, so there's a different layer, layer here. My, 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 my position is that when I was granted a special permit for one building on a two-building block, that it was understood that, that there was a continuation of a, of a precedent, that there was two businesses on that, that law. And to, I don't want to lose that precedent, because I don't think that I could go and start splitting things from one business to two businesses later. My, my assertion is that it was always two businesses, and I want to remain, I want it to remain that way. And I don't think I have the authority to agree to restrict, to reduce it to one. I think that what, it was always two. I'm asking for it to continue to be two since some time has passed, since one's been open. But I don't want to lock my, I don't want it to become officially one. I think it's an open question.
Right.
Was it two? I mean.
It was always two or three or four.
But the bank has been closed for forever, and so.
Historically, it was used as a bank. There was architects.
Office building, I know.
Offices upstairs.
Upstairs, yeah.
As well as.
As the retail.
Um, real estate offices, offices, art galleries.
Right.
All sorts of things. So at least holding on, I think that that's something that is valuable in its, in its pre-existing condition. And I don't think I'm, I don't think I have authority to agree to restrict that.
So perhaps what we want to do with this one is to continue it while you rethink how you want to propose this to us and get to counsel and, and then come back. Because I don't, it sounds like, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, we've got the issue of the planning board wants you to go in one way and out another. We're not sure we can grant to, you know, that we want to increase the traffic. It just looks like it needs to be.
What would I, you know, like, what would I have to come back with?
It's a good question.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure either, because if the applicant's contention is that it was always two businesses and has remained, this, this will continue to be two businesses, then, then why are we even here? Nothing's changing.
Exactly.
Right.
Just, we're just changing the square footage.
Right, we're just changing the square footage.
And then I would, and then I would be precluded from using it as a COVID app for this business. I would, I would remain, it would remain the other business. And I would have to not use it as a.
If I remember correctly, Zach, when you did the presentation in front of us, that you said that you were never going to put anything else that wasn't related to marijuana in there, if I remember right. I mean, we were, it was a very specific discussion that we had, and we granted you the special permits for the marijuana retail store. And there was discussion about, if I remember correctly, there was discussion about not putting another business in there.
I think that, I'm remembering it too, Mick. I think it was that he wanted to, it would have to be something that went with the marijuana business, something health-related, health-related, the kinds of things you mentioned a little earlier.
Because we, we really went out of our way to help you with the application, and we made sure we crossed all the Ts and dotted the Is. And now you've come back with this, and to me, I, I don't, I just don't get it, to be honest with you. So.
I think through you, Chair, I, I, I'm, there's nothing disingenuous. There's, it's very, it is what it was before. I think that the, the, the use of the word sublet is where you're getting caught up. The, the idea is actually, I, at the time, I said I couldn't really, you know, commit to the idea, but the idea has actually stayed exactly the same. I want to have a related business that sells things like CBD and things that I'm not allowed to sell as a cannabis retailer. And so for that purpose, it has to be a separate business. And so I'd have to sublet it to myself in order to be able to do that at that property from the state's perspective.
Well, if you were to come back, if you were to come back to the board, Zach, with a proposal of what exact business you're going to put in there related to your to what it is you, you're going to do, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I'm.
I just don't know when that's going to be, because I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for something, and I just don't know anything about it, so.
Sharon? Yeah, I'm going to say something that's going to piss some of you off. But Jeremy Young just came in here, and we bastardized the statue, at least in my humble opinion. We, we, we rewrote the application for him. We rewrote the square footage for him, because he's been in town for, for, for gen, for generations. And I think it's ridiculous that we put Zach through all this stuff when what, what we did at the beginning of this, the, our first hearing, where we let everything go. And now he comes in with what I think is a rather minor thing, and we, 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 we're crying.
Duly noted.
It's true. It's damn true.
Yep.
You won't, you'll hear it from other things that we go through now.
Okay, so where are we with this one? Manny?
Well, it, it was clearly a second business. Just before these guys decided to open it as a marijuana place. So I don't think it would lose its credentials. I don't know what the word you would use for, but it should still be a retail place. Or business then, consider a retail business. Even if it is a second business. Then what happens upstairs if it's, if people are staying above, is that a? What would that be considered?
Then you're adding another use that was never there. And, and the fire department, I had a discussion with the fire department about that, so the building's not sprinkled, so different types of uses wouldn't be appropriate. There's no, there's no.
We're planning to use the upstairs as office space, right?
Right now, it's personal space, so personal storage, my space, I can use it to run the business, but I can't have my employees use it as offices. Unless this, unless I get this amendment.
I see, okay.
I do not have any problems with it being a a separate retail space. It's always been that way.
Right, except that's not what he's asking for. He's asking to absorb it all into the, into the dispensary business.
Yeah, but.
And maybe go back to a retail, second, a second retail in the future. But in the meantime, that's not what he's asking for. He's asking to make it all one.
So then what, what, what should happen is we give him a permit to, so that he can use it as a place where he can sell the CBD oils and whatever else. I don't know how you would separate it, or Zach would separate it from one business to the other, from the other.
We'd have to for the cannabis question, I think.
That's what I think. But I, you know, I, I think Will's got a point, but I also, I think CCC is probably, and Zach has said that. He's precluded from selling CBD and stuff.
Right.
Well, I guess I'm struggling with what we're, you know, if, in fact, there have always been two businesses on there, then it is grandfathered, and then we don't need to weigh in on that part of it. Did we preclude two businesses in our last special permit? In which case, he does need an amendment in order to let him go forward with this, because at the time, he was, he was planning not to, he was on the fence about that. Does he need now our permission to go ahead with that? That's where I'm struggling.
I, I just remember it being very, very specific discussions when we granted the special, or the marijuana dispensary. Also, to Will's point, the owners of the building, and, and Zach may be related in some way, have been in town forever. I actually know the owner of the building, so even as somebody that just floated into town, whether it's a homeowner or a townie or whatever, it's irrelevant to my point, in my case.
But the fact of the matter is, I do remember in the original discussions that, you know, they've always said they wanted to retain the second retail business.
Okay.
They've said this from the outset, that, that, you know, he, he wanted, he did not want to, he was not giving that up. And but he didn't know yet, he wasn't right then ready to, to ask for it. I, I just, it's, I don't really have a problem with this amendment. I don't know if we need it, but I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Do need the amendment, because as I read the First Amendment language that Zach wants to change, they're restricted to the larger existing structure on the property.
Right, okay.
Allowed to be in the smaller structure, and I need to keep that in mind. So if we're going to allow him to do this, we do have to make an amendment. The question is, does he have to come back to us for? Does somebody have to come back to us if it's then sublet a year or two from now to a different retailer?
Okay.
Good question. And also, in his Second Amendment, number two, it says the planning board did not provide a recommendation. That's got to be changed.
Right, and I have written that differently, to say, I have added, the planning board has reviewed and recommended the plan with the recommendation of the egress and.
I didn't really get to ask any questions, so may I?
Yeah, sure.
But no one really had much of a conversation about what the planning board recommended. I'm guessing, I, I, they want only one way in, one way out, and I'm guessing they're thinking that having one way in and one way out, I mean, having, having it go both ways right there is a maybe a bit of a congestion. Usually you've got handicap, a handicap spot right there, and you've got traffic coming in and out, and no one really addressed that, so.
Yeah.
Sure, if you'd like, I can, I was at the hearing, so I can provide some color. The discussion, the discussion came about because one of the board members was concerned about the new bike path. It's not called a bike path. It may one day be there, and thought that because of that, for the safety of the future, maybe bike path, that we should not have two-way, we should avoid a two-way curb cut.
And it had nothing to do with the fact that you've got a handicap spot.
It was just that having a one-way curb cut is safer than a two-way, and there might be a bike path. So let's restrict it because we can't.
Yeah.
But there was, it was argued pretty fiercely by another member of the board, member against, thought that that was a bad idea, but he lost.
I see, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Trevor, where are you now?
Exactly.
Trevor?
I don't know. And I'm hungry.
To condition this in such a way that if it is used, if it is sublet in the future to another entity, that it does have to come back to the board?
How do we approve it for retail space?
Yeah.
Roll that out.
Right, right, we really, you know, I mean, if it's retail space, it's retail space, that, you know.
Don't think this would be a discussion if it wasn't cannabis space in the other place. Don't think this would be a discussion if it wasn't cannabis space in the other place. I think the different use is the, the specific special use is cannabis. It's a, it's a subset of retail. So I think.
No, yeah, I think, I think that's part of it. And I think, you know, it's just that because there's been so little traffic coming in and out of there, I think that people are worried about the traffic coming in and out of there once you open.
Right.
Um, but as you say, there've been many uses on that property over the years.
I, I've got a question for Zach if I may, Madam Chairperson. So Zach, how good, with the Cannabis Control, um, Commission, do they have any issues with a building and a business being closed or is that, that's not in their purview?
So, you know, well, you know, like there's, there's businesses in Main Street, so there's, there's precedent if it's a separate business with a separate entrance, separate employees. Um, you know, it's no different than having a storefront in a, in a sort of Main Street setting.
Mm hmm. Yeah, okay.
From their point of view, but that's my speculation. I, I can't really speak for them. I would have to, once I had this approval, I would have a conversation with my regulator and show them. But really, you know, I just want to say, Mick, I'm, I have no, I had no intention of misleading at all with this. What, my, my intentions remain the same. What, what's different about what I'm asking for is to temporarily use the space for the cannabis use.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I had always had the intention of trying to retain that retail space as a separate business and I just promised that I would come back to address the parking.
Okay.
And you have.
Yeah, I've been persuaded on the merits of your argument, so I will, I would go to a yes vote on this.
All right. There's, I have findings if you, I mean, they're, they're not very interesting findings because they're basically just the amendments.
I will move for the findings.
Okay, on this one. All right. Um, and my board is Manny? Yes, obviously, Nick, yes. Will?
Yep.
Trevor?
Yes.
And myself.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, um, this is an application and the different findings than I've usually writing, so keep me honest. Application to amend special permit 1920. Specifically, the board amends the language of finding four, which currently reads, "The marijuana retailer shall be located within the larger existing structure on the property, which consists of a 2,000-square-foot, two-story wood-framed building and approximately 360 square feet of one-story auxiliary building connected by a wooden deck and surrounded by a large gravel parking area with railroad-type borders." To read, "The marijuana retailer shall be located within the larger existing structure on the property, which consists of a 2,000-square-foot, two-story wood-framed building and approximately two, 360 square feet of one-story auxiliary building connected by a wooden deck and surrounded by a large gravel parking area with railroad-type borders." A, "The auxiliary building may also be occupied by the marijuana retailer or be sub- sublet to another general retailer. In any case, the auxiliary building will be used for retail purposes." That's the first amendment. Three, "The board further amends its findings in connection with the approval of the development of significant impact pursuant to 6.3.13, which currently reads, 'One, the applicant provides parking for 14 vehicles, including two handicap spaces. Two, the planning board did not provide a recommendation.' And three, pursuant to section 3.6.3.1 of the bylaw, the proposed use as a retail business under the bylaw requires two spaces per establishment or one space for each 100 and square feet of floor area, whichever is larger, plus one."
150.
I'm sorry, 150 is that? Yeah, 150, plus one space for each three employees or nearest multiple thereof. The proposed use will occupy 1,162 square feet as per plans filed with the board and requires eight spaces for the retail establishment and two spaces for the employees. To read, "The applicant provides parking for 20 vehicles, including two handicap spaces. Two, the planning board has reviewed and recommended the, amended the plan except for the access and egress plan." Um, three, pursuant to six, section 6.3.1 of the bylaw, "The proposed use as a retail business under the bylaw requires two spaces per establishment or one space for each 150 square feet of floor area, whichever is larger, plus one space for each three employees or nearest multiple thereof. The proposed use will occupy 1,590 as retail space, another 732 as office space as per plans filed with the board and requires 16 spaces for the retail establishment and three spaces for the employees."
What about, wait a minute, that's, that's not how Zach wrote it. It's 16 spaces for the retail and office spaces and three spaces for employees.
I thought I copied the lawyer's language on that one.
That's not how it is in my packet.
Okay. Read it to me again.
What it says is, um, the last line is, "Board comma and requires 16 spaces for the retail and office spaces."
Office spaces.
And three spaces for employees.
Okay. Yep. 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 Okay.
I will move to accept the findings.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Will seconds. All in favor. Manny?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, you got that one, Zach. Now we're going on to the sign.
Getting late.
That's right. We're going on to the sign. Aren't you glad? Slow turtle way.
Thanks for doing this one first. I appreciate it.
Karen, do we need to make a, a, a motion to grant the amendment?
Oh yeah, I guess so. Yes, we need a motion to, to amend the special permit.
I will make a motion to amend the special permit. To include what?
Well, you don't have to, yeah, as, as writ, read.
As written.
As written. I need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, um, all in favor. Manny?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
And me, aye. All right, one more river to cross here. This is the sign. This is an application for a variance um, to erect a sign on Route 6. I'd assume I didn't have any letters and I assume I don't have anybody in the audience who wants to speak and I think the application speaks for itself, so I'm going to start somewhere. I'll start with Mick.
Now come back to me later, please.
Okay. All right, Trevor?
Uh, yeah, come back to me as well.
Okay. All right, Manny?
I'd like to hear what Jan has to say on this.
Okay. All right, sure. Yep.
Okay.
I'm sure she has some notes there.
All right, I'm sure she does.
Thank you, Jan.
Well, um, so, boys, Zach, it, it's pretty clear. Uh, first of all, variances are very rarely granted. This is your, not your, we discuss properties such as yours. It, it's not like we overlook this and, um, you know, you're not in the commercial district and you don't have access on Route 6 and I just, I'm sorry, I just don't see how you can do it.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Will?
Yeah, I mean, very brief, briefly, uh, 8.4.3 says that owing to circumstances related to soils conditions, shape, or topography of the land. And this is, is not any of those, so it just doesn't meet the criteria for forbearance.
Trevor, I'm back to you now.
To me?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I understand. I don't think it meets, it doesn't meet the criteria.
In the interest of time, Cher, can I withdraw the application?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, you're, so you're going to withdraw it. Hey, listen, 50% isn't bad.
I, I, I just want to say I didn't want to waste anyone's time. I, I tried to, I spoke with, uh, Paul and, uh, Chris and my lawyer and we just thought it would, can't hurt to ask. I, I thought that when you, when we put up a mock sign of what is allowed,
Mm hmm.
it was, it seemed extremely small from across the intersection.
Mm hmm.
And so.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
I got one quick, if I may.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, are you allowed to put a sign up with the word cannabis on it? Or?
I am now.
You are now? They changed that, did they? Okay.
Yeah.
I was just curious. Okay.
Zach, I had a boss once who said, always said about if asking for anything, you already have the no.
That's the worst thing that can happen, I guess. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I think.
Do you need to do something?
Do I have to? Yeah, um, motion to, uh, withdraw without prejudice?
Have to withdraw without prejudice.
Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Manny?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
And me. Thank you. Thank you, Zach, for hanging in all these hours.
Thank you so much. Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you. Okay. All right, I have to call this. Nobody can go anywhere yet. Um, 2110, Nora Reese and Casey Clark have, um, asked to withdraw without prejudice. I need a motion. Wait, do I, Chris, do I make a board for that? Do I need, I, I'll just do the same board. Manny, Mick, Will, Trevor and me. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to let them withdraw the application without prejudice.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor. Manny?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Me. Okay, I think we have one set of minutes and I wanted to update you on, um, the alternate position. Um, that's all I got for business. Chris, minutes from last time, right? Always takes her a minute to.
I think it's, uh, Jane, I'm not sure if it's, was the 14th or 11th, isn't it?
Uh.
We only have one meeting in the month, so I can get the date. Have that in front of me.
It was the 11th. No, today's the 11th. It was the 14th. Um, meetings of, the minutes of January 14th. I need a motion to accept.
I'm moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor? Andy?
Uh, no.
Uh, Trevor?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Sharon, aye. Jan?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
And Will?
Aye.
All right, great. Great job. Um, Al Muller has applied for the alternate position. Um, I have written a letter in support. You can tell him a little bit about him, Will.
Yeah, Al was for many, many years a, uh, uh, well, he's an employee, uh, uh, of the CIA. And he's now.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah. And, and he's authorized to tell people he is, so.
Doesn't have to kill his force.
No.
He doesn't have to kill his force before he tells us.
And, and anyway, he, he's a real smart guy and, uh, been all over the world, seen, seen a lot, so I, I think, I think he'll be a good mix.
I was about zoning in Saudi Arabia and, uh.
You never know who we're going to be on the board. It's awesome.
That's true.
Pardon me, is, what is his last name? Muller?
M U. M U E L L R, right? M U E L L R?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Mm hmm. And, um, I have been checking this. I sent a letter in support. I've been checking the select board agenda. He's, has not been on it yet. But so it's working its way up to the.
Okay.
To wherever.
I guess the next thing, before we make a motion to, uh, adjourn, I think Trevor should get a 10 out of 10 on Rate My Room because those books look awesome in the back.
Absolutely. He definitely should. That, that is, that is good.
You're going to 10 out of 10, Trevor.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll be on, on TV soon, being interviewed with those books behind you, you know?
Yes, you will, definitely.
Talking heads. So, all right, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I'm not going to do a roll call. Aye. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Uh, Jan, you'll, you'll send Chris the.
I'm going to put whatever changes there were and all.
I'll, you'll send them. Okay, great. And I will send you the rest of them, Chris. We did very well tonight.
Oh, yeah.
We, we, we went through a lot.
I worried we spent an hour on that first one. I said, oh, boy.
I know.
Nice.
All right, good night, everybody.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
All right, Chris, do you want me, do you need me for anything or?
We're all done for now.
We're all done. Very good. I'll send you.
Probably going to get into work a little bit late tomorrow, but I'll get, get right on these.
Yeah, I may not get everything to you until later in the morning because I'm going to go.
Yeah, it's fine. That'll be fine.
Yeah, okay.
Have a nice evening. Have a ni- I'm going to have a drink.
Me too. And that's on the recording. Okay.
Bye.
Bye, bye.